All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order for Wednesday, August 7th, 2019. Mr. Aho, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber, here.
Mr. Solera, here.
Mr. Curtis, here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Here.
And we are all here. If you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Not this evening.
Okay. For my president's report again, this is Wednesday, August 7th, 2019. Probably the hardest report I've had to give. I've been trying to think since Monday what to say. We want to send our heartfelt sympathies to the family of Max Lagon. Max was a 2018 graduate of Twinsburg High School, was killed in a tragic car accident on Monday along with his friend Sidney Thomas from Bedford, and we want to send our thoughts and prayers out to both families. And also healing prayers out to two other Twinsburg graduates from the same class, Deja Watson and Courtney Spencer, who are currently fighting right now. If you'd all join me in a moment And that concludes my president's report. Mrs. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Indeed, our hearts are broken this week, passing of Max and the injury of the other two students, as well as a student from Bedford. Have had communications with my friends in Bedford, and they're feeling the same that we are. So both communities have been touched in such a profound way. And we do know that Mrs. Lagon, Mr. Lagon and Sam are in our thoughts and in our prayers, and will continue to be that way in the next future, as well as the parents of Courtney and Deja as well. So it's been a hard couple of days, and I'm very proud of the staff at the high school who have welcomed students to Twinsburg High School and provided them with support and counseling. And I think in a time like this, students and even adults need to surround themselves with each other and understand that they're feeling the same way and recollecting some fond memories of those who were in the accident on I-90. So again, we send our heartfelt sympathy to all of the families involved in that accident and continue to support them in any way that we can. It's nice to be back here at the Government Center for a change, right? And I think if you just take a look across the school district, this week especially, the place is really starting to come alive. Marching Band has band camp, and our Fall Sports students are busy getting prepared for the fall season, and our staff members have been in and out all week doing professional development. Custodians and janitors and mechanics and bus drivers and a whole slew of others, our student workers are all busy preparing, putting the final touches on our classrooms and our grounds. And the administrators are finalizing schedules and greeting parents and greeting staff and just getting very excited for the first day of school, which is Wednesday, August 21st. Board of Education, the Back-to-School Mailer went in the mail today, and the SNAP codes for Power School Registration go in the mail tomorrow. Bus schedules are scheduled to go in the mail tomorrow as well. So by this weekend, we would believe that our parents will have the communications that they're looking for. The annual calendar and annual report will be in homes hopefully in the middle of next week. I'm to understand it'll be in the mail on the 13th, but those go bulk mail, so they take a little bit more time to get to houses. But folks can look forward to them coming to their mailboxes very soon. And I know even residents who don't have children in the school district look forward to that calendar. So it is coming. It looks great, and I hope you find it very helpful as the school year gets underway. We want to congratulate Mr. Miller and the Twins Days Committee for just a fantastic weekend, last weekend. It was so much fun just to be around all of that activity and to greet all of these twins from all over the country, and in fact, all over the world. Chad and I had the opportunity to take folks back and forth to the square on Saturday morning. I had visitors from Kansas and Wisconsin and Missouri and Illinois and New York and Boston, and just it was a lot of fun. And the classrooms were amazing and outrageous and just, we had a great time. So we want to thank Mr. Miller and the committee for always doing such a wonderful job with Twins Days, and we also want to thank hundreds of volunteers. That festival does not happen without so many people volunteering their time. So thank you to our coaches, our booster groups, our advisors, our students, staff members, and just residents who came out to help. So it was a wonderful event, and I'm sure we'll be talking about that for many years. There was just an article, our news clip on the channel, one of the channels, last night, and I thought, that's kind of strange. It stays after, and they're still talking about Twins Days, but fun to watch nonetheless. Board of Education, I know you've heard that Governor Dewine has signed off on the budget bill just a few weeks ago, and within the budget bill is language that defines Ohio's new graduation requirements. We're very grateful that the new requirements are defined prior to the beginning of the school year so that the class of 2023 will know what they must do to receive a high school diploma upon graduation. Over the next few weeks, we'll be adding information about the new graduation requirements on the district website, and we'll present specific information to you at an upcoming meeting as soon as we're underway here in the next couple of weeks. There's a number of things that are locally decided, and so we have to convene some meetings up at the high school with Curriculum Department to put some definition to what some of those diploma seals will look like and what the requirements will be. And as soon as those things are defined, we'll present that to you for your approval and then post information on the website. Also, this is one last reminder to our new families or families of kindergarten students that the district will hold new student registration next Tuesday, August 13th, one last time in the evening. Our district website has information about new student registration, and we ask that our new parents kindly follow the directions on our website and call for an appointment for August 13th to register your child. It's really important that we get as many students registered before the first day of school. It just helps the school district prepare and be able to welcome the children on that first day of school. And Mr. Felber, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Powers. And I'll ask my colleagues if we have any committee reports. The only one I'm aware of upcoming is the Business Advisory Committee on August 27th in the morning. And we do have administrative reports, so we'll just toss it right to Mr. Aho.
Thank you.
We've had a report over the summer on the five-year forecast, but we thought it was important that the rest of the constituents were able to see it on television and YouTube. So Mr. Aho has prepared another presentation for us.
Great, thank you. This is the five-year forecast. It's the May update is what this one is. In October, you have to do like the new five-year forecast for the subsequent five years, and this May one is just the update of the October one. One of the things about a five-year forecast is where you can, you know, find them. It's on ODE website. You know, you just look there and then you go to the ODE and you can find the website. On the website, it tells you the purpose of the five-year forecast, and basically the purpose is to engage local boards of educations and communities in long-range planning and discussion of financial issues facing the school district, to provide a method for ODE and the state auditors to identify schools with financial problems, and then to serve as a basis for the 412 certificate, which is basically a certificate for very large contracts and labor contracts. And basically, it's an attestation that you have the dollars to cover those contracts. The whole reason this five-year forecast is out there is to keep any kind of political subdivision, cities, towns, schools, counties, from basically getting to the end of the year, having no money, and then everybody just, you know, is shocked that nobody told me that we didn't have money. Well, now everybody knows where the financial position of the district or city or town or whatever, they know where they're at. Twinsburg Schools is a large organization. We have about 500 teachers, 36 buses, 4,100 kids, five buildings. We did about $46 million in expenditures last year. So it's, you know, it's a large organization. One of the things over time that we've, you know, just because of the way the state has funded schools and Twinsburg in particular, our revenues were very flat for about 10 years from 2007 through 2017. We even passed a levy in the midst of all that and really didn't, you know, have a whole nice big bump up. We did pass a levy at the end of this cycle, and you can see that the revenue line is on an One of the reasons that the revenue is flat is from House Bill 920, which basically says, and this was passed many years ago, what it does is it keeps the funding level on a levy flat. So whenever you pass a levy, the tax on that property will stay the same even if the property tax, or even if the property value doubles, the tax will still stay the same. House Bill 66 was the elimination of the TPP, and then state funding with their caps and guarantees. With their state funding model, you've heard that it doesn't really work. Well, you know, it's kind of evident here with the caps and guarantees that are on these funding models, where the state says you won't get any more money, but you won't lose any money. So they cap and guarantee districts, and the funding model really doesn't work. Here's one of the examples of the levy cycle. As you can see on there, you know, the levies is kind of like a stair step going up. As you pass a levy, you can get more money, get more dollars. So like you pass a levy and right there, you'd catch a few more dollars, you know, and then it flattens off because of House Bill 920, then you have to pass another levy, and it flattens out. You know, as you first pass the levy, you can, you know, have a few extra dollars, and then those few extra dollars are used over here to fund when the levies, when the expenditures exceed revenues. And that's kind of how it works for all school This is basically the chart of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. We're kind of getting at the point where our expenditures are gonna start exceeding our revenues, and as that happens, then the fund balance, you know, quickly tails off. You know, it's not a real gradual thing. It really, you know, chips into it pretty quick. And there's the example where the surplus offsets the deficits. Here's a quick chart for the tangible personal property cat tax reimbursements. Back in 2010, it was $7,800. Well, by the time we hit 2023, it's gonna be zero. So all those dollars are disappearing over time, you know, and so in 2023, there's, you know, $7.8 million that we're not receiving, you know, and you can see that's, you know, a big chunk of change over time that we don't receive. This is the simulation that the ODE sent out. You can see on there where this is the tangible dollars are slowly going away. Every year, there's a reduction of $493,000. So it started out at like $4 million, goes down quickly, and then at the end of this, in 2023, there's $15,000. This is right off of ODE's information that they send us. This is basically SFPR, which is basically the funding model that the ODE has developed. You know, there's different categories where they give districts dollars and how it's all funded, and they put this all together in a formula, and then they come up with a number for the district. For Twinsburg, that number, again, hang on a second, that number is like $5 million. Let me see what that is. It's $5 million. But if you were to take it and actually look at what's calculated, it's $9.2 million. So if this funding model worked, we'd receive $9.2 million, but because of the caps and guarantees I talked about earlier, you know, our capped dollars we don't receive are $3.2 million. And this is all from the state manipulating these funding This is the October forecast. The reason I brought this one in just for quick to show you, down on the bottom, there's a star, and that was the levy, the renewal levy. So when we develop these five-year forecasts, the ODE and State Auditor's Office, they say you have to, if you have a levy that you're working on, you need to put it down on the bottom, and basically subtract it off of the top. So since it was renewed, you know, here you can see that those dollars aren't, you know, down at the bottom. They've actually moved up to the top and are included in the real estate line. That's one thing that confuses people sometimes. They'll look back and forth and say, well, one year this was higher than the next year, or something like that. And a lot of it has to do with, you know, the levy cycle. Any kind of renewals have to be pulled out of the real estate tax at the top. It's put down at the bottom, and it kind of is meant to draw attention to the fact that there's a levy to be renewed, and basically it kind of gives a snapshot of what would happen if that levy, you know, wasn't renewed, you know, just on that kind of a pro forma basis. This is one thing that I was doing, and I was just thinking about like, what would happen if, you know, in May in 2017, we passed a 6.9 mil levy, and what would happen if that levy wasn't passed? You know, what would happen going forward? What I did is I pulled it on the top and put it down the bottom just to see what it would look like. And what happens then is right away, and this would be for actual dollars, we're deficit spending right off the bat. Our expenditures exceeded revenues by almost $2 million for '18, if, you know, if you could look back on that. And then quickly, you know, all the rest of the numbers for revenues are definitely short of the expenditure levels. Then what happens there is you can see out in 2022, the district would be in the red. What happens then is, and I was just looking at that, and this was kind of an interesting fact here. Within five years, the district would be in a physical emergency, state takeover. So from 2017 to 2022, if we hadn't passed, you know, if the community hadn't stepped up and passed the additional levy when they did in May of 2017, the district would be looking at state takeover in 2022. That's how quick that happens, five years. That's really what the point of this whole thing is, is in five years, if you don't do anything, things happen very rapidly, very quickly. So, you know, the administration, the team, and the board, we're always looking at these things and then thinking, you know, far enough out ahead to make sure that, you know, we try to get things early enough to make a, you know, an impact and not wait until five years out, and then all of a sudden, you know, you're out of money and the state comes in and takes over the district. For 2019, there's a pie chart of the expenditures, and basically 84% of the expenditures are for teachers and staff. We're a service organization, put teachers in the classrooms. We have bus drivers and janitors and cooks and a lot of people running the district. So basically, that's the majority of the expenditures are for people. Have some purchase services. Those things are anything from utilities to insurance to legal services to, you know, any vendor that comes in and will provide a service would be in that category. And then you can see supplies and other objects. Other objects are like any kind of expenditure basically that we do with the state or with the county. A lot of that goes into that category. One of the things over time is we really have tried to manage our expenditures. So when you think about that chart earlier that shows expenditures and revenues and how expenditures are exceeding revenues, you know, I think this is important to note here. There's our expenditures per pupil. That's from the 2018, the FY18 Cup Report. That's off of ODE. And then here's some of our neighbors. You know, we're pretty well below our neighbors. And then in the red on the right there, there's the state average, which we're below the state average by about $600. And, you know, in similar districts, we're below those also. Also, so, you know, I think we really have managed our expenditures well. You know, and that's, I think, important that we keep an eye on our expenditures. You know, and one of the reasons we do manage expenditures is because we're not, you know, we're not getting any big pots of money from ODE or from the state of Ohio. So we have to manage the dollars that we do have, the scarce resources. Some of the things that we've done over time to manage those expenditures and the like, several years ago and for fiscal year 13, was the Operational Change Plan. That cut approximately $2.6 million in salaries and benefits. And then there was also paired with a levy and some other changes. So that was like a $7 million impact on the FY13 budget. And there's the May 2nd, 2017, that levy was approved. You know, and it's been very important for the district moving forward. You know, one of the things we're always aware of, you know, it's a balancing act. You know, if you had unlimited supplies, you could do great things in the classroom, but, you know, it's a balancing act. You have to make sure that you, you know, you try to get the best that you can with the dollars that you have. One of the things that's really important that comes out every year that the administration puts on is this quality profile. That really does tell the rest of the story of the district, a lot of the highlights that go on in the district throughout the year. You know, if you're not involved in something, you probably don't know it happens all the time. So this is really a nice place to look at what, you know, has happened through the year. You know, a lot of times, too, this stuff just, it just happens, and, you know, if people are busy and they don't get to see it, but if, in this print document here, it's really a nice recap of the stuff that goes on in the district. Some of the enhanced services over the last couple of years, the Chromebook Initiative, one-to-one at the high school, and then doing some other configurations at the other schools. The expanded preschool offering, it's been a big help to the kids. Blended learning, Makerspace, additional staffing for special needs, which is usually required to meet their needs, and the wraparound services, PBIS, counselors, and Beach Park. Those are all the things that, you know, have come about in recent progress. Here's the levy cycle. You can see that in, you know, at the very top was the $4 million emergency levy which passed in 2019. There's another emergency levy coming up, and then after that, there'll be another levy, which is just a regular operating levy. Down the bottom is the high school bonds. Those will be paid off in 2021, '22, in that timeframe. And that covers the five-year forecast for this time. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, no questions, but, you know, going back to Marty where you were talking about, you know, the hypothetical, if we had not, you know, passed the levy, and you could see the illustration of the precipitous drop in our revenue, but also, you know, how much more rapidly we would have, you know, gone into deficit spending, given the fact that, as you alluded to, 84% of our expenditures is people. Well, obviously, the example that you laid out, the board would have to act. So as rapid as it looks, that, there's an assumption that if we didn't do anything, that's where we would be. So obviously, when we have these conversations with the community, when we are seeking additional dollars and we say that should we not receive those dollars, the board would be forced to make some very difficult decisions, looking to where the majority of our expenditures are. We'd have to take a hard look at that, as well as programming and things like that. So my point is, you often hear that, and it's not rhetoric, it's reality. These are things that every board, you know, in the state has to face, and we're not immune to that as a district. I think we do a good job of watching our pennies, and more importantly, making sure that the expenditures that we do have make an impact on the classroom. So, you know, I appreciate your insight. This particular report was very informative in that it kind of illustrates, you know, what could happen if we didn't do it, and I'm hopeful that the community recognizes that we take their commitment seriously. We don't take it for granted. We understand that it's, that it's hard, but we're also working to change that in Columbus as well. So I appreciate, this is a good, this is a good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna make similar comments, so I appreciate that. Mr. Curtis, you know, what you saw in the first three points in your second slide is what's required by the state. And, you know, if boards aren't engaged as we are, you know, that's what happens in that slide that you showed what could have happened was very important. It's also a good time, you know, to note that our audits are always clean. We go beyond the minimum that you've seen in this, and I'm blanking on the extra report that we do.
CAFR.
CAFR. I was gonna say cup, but that's...
I'm against the data.
But, you know, the clean audits, you know, these are professional honors that come in and continually give Marty's office and staff awards for these audits, to the point where we even have less auditing because of the fact that we've had repeated clean audits. So again, this doesn't happen in a vacuum. You know, many boards before us have engaged in these similar conversations, and, you know, this is good work, and it's, you know, it's, Wall Street isn't just predictable, so. Any other further comments on the five-year forecast?
Just real fast, and Mr. Curtis, you kind of touched on it too, but I think it's important to highlight the fact that, you know, while our per pupil expenditure has gone up, you know, over the past few years, the fact that, you know, and this is, you know, a new, a new to our treasurer's report was your enhanced services slide, which I think is very important. You know, I did miss the little jab at the state, though, and the federal government about how they can spend money that they don't have and they're the only ones allowed to. But, you know, I think it's important to highlight, you know, the fact that the dollars that we're spending and when our expenditures are increasing, these are dollars that we're spending directly on the classroom. And there's a lot of conversation, a lot of work that goes on, you know, on your part, on Superintendent Powers' part and her staff to, you know, determine the best use of our dollars so that it has a direct impact on the classroom, that we're not wasting dollars. And the fact that we've been able to add and expand a preschool program, the fact that we've been able to, you know, start the Chromebook Initiative and in fact, you know, increase the speed at which the rollout would occur, the fact that, you know, we've done the Makerspace, is we're doing a blended learning initiative, and we're still below the state average in per pupil spending, below similar districts, and significantly below our neighboring communities, which, you know, we are so often compared to, even though those makeups of our student population and our community population aren't always equal, I think is a fantastic point to highlight and keep here. So I appreciate you adding that and making that part of your report for the community tonight.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Aho. Do we have any blue cards?
No blue cards.
No blue cards. So moving on from remonstrance, we are at Section H, Treasurer's Report and Recommendations, and without objection from my colleagues, I'll read H-1, 2, and 3 together. H-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education proves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of July 17, 2019, is sent to the board under separate cover. H-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of May 2019, Bank Reconciliation, General Fund Financial Summary Report, and Financial Report by Fines, sent to the board under separate cover. And H-3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of May 2019, the total including payroll, $4,787,492.77. Do I have a motion for those three as read?
Sir, moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And H-1, 2, and 3 pass 5-0. Moving on to I, Action Items Personnel, again without objection, read all three. I-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I-1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. H-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I-2, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified... other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory RSC background checks. And three, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I3, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory RSC background checks. Do I have a motion for those three as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeFabio. Any discussion? I don't think we had any. Do we have any retirements?
I don't think so, not this time of year.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
And I1, 2, and 3 pass 5-0. I will now read J1 through 9. Action Items New Business. One, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation of, for the Twinsburg High School from Heinz of Warrensville Heights in the amount of $1,181.0. Two, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation from Ajax and Sanjay Callahan of Hudson in the amount of $100 to support the purchase of polo shirts and business cards for the academy students per the attached exhibit. Three, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves an agreement for admission with Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for one student to attend the PEP Prentice Autism Program. Program cost is $433.0 per day for 194 days for the 2019-2020 school year. Total cost $84,200.0 has sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Four, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the Student Service Agreement with Re-Education Services, Inc., to provide special education services for two students for the 2019-2020 school year. $280.0 per day per student for 182 days is sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Five, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the Service Agreement with the Education Alternatives to provide special education for seven students for 2019-2020 school year, totaling $188,588.545.0, which includes $1,281 credit for the 2018-2019 school year, is sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Six, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a contract for 2019-2020 school year with Precious Cargo of Shrim Falls, Ohio, for as-needed transportation services for extracurricular events and select special education homeless routes pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the contract is sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Seven, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a contract for the 2019-2020 school year with Suburban Transportation of Hinckley, Ohio, for needed transportation services for extracurricular events and select special education and homeless routes pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the contract is sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Eight, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves an agreement with Ohio Schools Council, Lake Area Educational Medium Consortium, in the amount of $1,076.25 effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, for media service, media center services is sent to the board under separate cover. This is also a general fund expense. And finally, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approve the settlement agreement, release, and waiver for educational expenses for one student receiving special education services outside the district per the conditions outlined in the agreement is sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for J1 through 9 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. As always, thank you to Heinz and the Callahans for those donations. Anybody have further comments on anything in particular here? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And J1 through 9 pass 5-0. Moving on to J10, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the proposal is sent to the board under separate cover from Klein Mechanical of Barberton, Ohio, for the Twinsburg High School humidity HVAC project to address the Twinsburg High School gymnasium, the Twinsburg High School auditorium, and the Twinsburg High School school music classrooms in the amount of $45,200.0. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. Is there a motion for J10 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Mr. Welker, any comment?
This is just another precautionary measure to ensure that we control our humidity as best as possible for the gym area of the high school auditorium and the music area. So it gives us more control over our HVAC systems and was highly recommended by CCG, who looks over some of our systems on an annual basis.
So spend now or spend a lot more later if there's damage?
Right.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And J1 passes 5-0. All right, K miscellaneous? All right, hearing none. The board does have need for executive session. I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 7:37 to discuss the employment and compensation of public employees as per the Board of Education Policy 0166A, entry-renew negotiations with public employees concerning the compensation or other terms and conditions of employment as per Board of Education Policy 0166E. I've made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0. We are now in executive session and do not anticipate further business when we reconvene. Have a good evening.